All right, moving forward with our agenda, next is proclamations, commendations, petitions, and announcements. The January recycling award recipient is Aaron Carter on Prairie Way North. He'll be awarded for his recycling efforts with a grant from Washington County. And now we'll move on to our open forum. This is a portion of the meeting to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the agenda. The city council may take action or reply at the time of the statement, or may give direction to staff regarding investigation of comments expressed. Total of 15 minutes is allotted for public comment during the open forum, and we have two guests here that we know want to speak during the public forum, so, are the open forum. So first we'll have Mary Goulet come up. She's no stranger to this building.
Hello ma'am. Mary Goulet, 204 North Fifth Street. I'm here to represent the BCAAL tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so Madam Mayor, council members and staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I would like to start by expressing my sincere appreciation for the dedication and hard work all of you put into supporting and enhancing our community. The BCAAL is truly grateful for the ongoing support we receive from each of you, whether it's from the Public Works Department, the police and fire departments are a wonderful library. Your collective contributions are essential to making Bayport such a great place to live. Tonight I'm here to extend a warm invitation for you to join us at the Ice Cream Social, which will be held on June 4th at Lakeside Park. The event provides a fantastic opportunity for neighbors to come together in a beautiful scenic setting. We would be truly honored to have your involvement this year. Specifically, we'd love for Madam Mayor and the council members to volunteer for a 30-minute ice cream scoop, scooping shift. Glad I said that right.
Say it 10 times fast.
I almost said something wrong. It's a fun and easy way to engage with residents, support the success of the event, and of course enjoy some ice cream. And let's just be honest, scooping ice cream is a lot more fun than building gingerbread houses. In addition to the social, we're also organizing a food drive to support families with children during the summer months. We're seeking donations of kid-friendly, non-perishable food items, such as snacks, juice boxes, and cereal. All donations will directly benefit the St. Croix United Food Pantry here in Bayport. This year, we're excited to introduce a new children's activity where local kids will help assemble swag bags for other children in need. We've already reached out to the local churches to partner on this initiative, and the response has been overwhelmingly positive. We hope this will inspire the youth of our community to engage in giving back and foster a sense of generosity and involvement. Thank you again for your consideration. We're excited about your support, and we hope to see you at the Ice Cream Social.
Thank you, Mary.
I've wanted to say this my whole life, I stand for questions.
Well, okay, I'll ask one then. Do you have any idea how much ice cream I can scoop into me in half an hour?
Scoop into?
Yeah.
It's very busy.
It's very busy, and it's, yeah, I'm excited. I hope you guys all do it, because I've done it for the last several years, and it's a fun night, so.
It's amazing how many people go down there.
Yeah.
So it's a good job. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks for the great idea, and I'm super excited about the food drive option that you added to this. Last year, the Lions did a diaper drive, so, yeah, this is.
And we'll coordinate with the Lions as well.
Yeah, yeah, great, great work. Thank you. And BCAAL stands for the Bayport Community Action Link, for those of you who are not aware. And they're always looking for members, right, Mary? Anyone can help.
We're small but mighty.
Small but mighty. They do a lot of great events in town, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And next up, Barbara Hycamp is here.
Hi, I'm Barbara Hycamp, Mayor.
I know.
All right, so I have a little presentation. So Sarah and Matt asked me a very long time ago to come.
Well, first tell us where you're from.
So my name is Barbara Hycamp, and I'm a water resources educator for the Lower St. Croix Watership Partnership. So I have a few slides.
You also are a Bayport resident.
I also am a Bayport resident. If you look at the first slide on my presentation.
Oh, uh-oh.
They're switching it over.
Okay.
So here is my daughter, one of her best friends at Lakeside Park, claiming victory.
My screen isn't working. Oh, there.
Be nice if we could get this one.
Can we get it on the main one too, Harrison? The one on the podium?
Oh, you can see it's mine.
Yeah, we have, there's a TV right there, so we can pretend like we're looking at you, but we're.
Cool, no, that's fine. You can look at the TV screen and find it back. Is it there?
There it is. Hey! I love that picture.
So on the agenda, it says my affiliation is the East Metro Water Resource Education Program. That is true, but I'm actually talking tonight about my source of funding that comes from the other aspect of my job, which was the Lower St. Croix Watership Partnership. But yes, I am a Bayport resident. My husband and I and our children moved here in 2014. We live in the Inspiration Development. We love this community. Both my girls go to Anderson. One of them was there from preschool up through 5th grade, now in Oakland. My youngest is now in 2nd grade. Being able to be part of this community has been amazing. So thank you to all of the staff. I work on the Foundation Board at the library. I co-lead two Girl Scout troops that are primarily Anderson Girl Troops. My husband is part of the Inspiration Community Association as president, and is a thorn in Matt's side many times. But we love this community. So the Lower St. Croix Watership Partnership is a regional watershed management scheme that the Board of Soil and Water Resources came up with approximately 10 years ago, maybe a little bit more than 10 years ago. And the idea was, is that we wanted to be able to better align water planning, we wanted to better align initiatives that looked at being able to improve water quality throughout the state, and we wanted to make sure that we were able to get money to portions of the state that truly needed it. A lot of our clean water funding is by grants, by competitive grant process, and so they wanted to create, it's called One Watershed, One Plan, a way to be able to bring together different partners to be able to collaborate and talk about how can we make sure that resources are going to where they need to go, and we can better improve our water resources. So in our corner of the world, we have the Lower St. Croix Watershed, and so it includes about 60% of Washington County, pretty much all of Chisago County, and then portions of Anoka, Pine, and Isanti. So this is my playground. This is the realm in which I work. So you might find me down in Hastings working one day, or up here in Bayport. I could be up in North Branch, or I could even be almost as far north as Pine City. They're just out of the Lower St. Croix. So we're kind of getting rid of some political boundaries, but then we're establishing other boundaries that I have to work within. But I work with the partners from all of the agencies within this region, which includes counties, soil water conservation districts, and because Washington County and Anoka County are part of the metro, they also have that middle level of watershed management, which is the watershed districts or the watershed management organizations. But back in 2017, long before I took this job, you had all these partners get together and come up with the 10-year comprehensive watershed management plan. What are we going to do over the next 10 years to be able to help improve water quality outcomes, take care of our lakes, rivers, and streams, enhance habitat, and kind of maintain the quality of life that we've gotten used to here in this portion of the world? So, since we started implementation in 2021, every two years, we get a pot of implementation funding, and that goes toward, specifically toward projects that look to improve water quality in priority areas of the watershed, all for the benefit of the St. Croix River. And these projects can include everything from agricultural landscapes to just rural landscapes, to looking at urban and developing landscapes. And some of the types of projects that we've done up to date, look at stream restorations, we've been working down at Efton Alps, water and sediment control basins in our agricultural landscapes, looking at even just something as simple as keeping cows out of the lake, having their hooves mash up the water and stir up sediment nutrients, looking at wetland enhancements and restorations, wetlands help create water storage, as well as infiltration capacity and filtering capacity of the water, something like enhanced street sweeping. I had a great time following Simon's team last fall as their street sweeper went out and did their thing. It was a lot of fun to watch. Looking at ravine stabilization, being able to stop erosion, stormwater diversions, bio retention basins, pretty much the sky's the limit. The biggest bang that we've got thus far, though, is working with our basin farmers. And so we have a lot of ag down in Southern Washington County, kind of intermixed here and there as we go up the basin. There's another large ag contingent in Chisago County, and working with those farmers to implement practices that really look to help reduce soil erosion, and keeping the soil on the fields and not getting fertilizer to go off into our lakes, rivers, and streams. So being able to offer incentive programs like no-till, conversion of farmland to prairie or pasture land, cover crops, reduce tillage. It's been a really great way to be able to build up additional trust, where we stop finger pointing between urban and rural landscapes, and really just get people talking and being able to say, hey, look, farmers are really doing their part too. So we have this education team, and this is where this dovetails with the East Metro Water Resource Education Program, which I hope many of you are familiar with since Bayport is a member. So I work with Angie Hong. I'm co-host at the Washington Conservation District, and part of my funding comes from the MREP program, and part of it comes from the State Lower St. Croix Watership Partnership. And so we have four educators. There's Angie. We hired a new educator last spring, Jessica. If you haven't had the chance to meet her, she is a bundle of energy. She's going to be working as our volunteer coordinator. She's fabulous. Myself, and then we actually just hired a new agricultural outreach agronomist as well. And so all of us are together, really just trying to make conservation cool, right? And so doing our part to help people understand that the way that we have used and managed our landscapes aren't necessarily leading to desirable outcomes, right? The way that we water our lawns, or we fertilize our lawns, or the fact that we have so many lawns, how we live along our shorelines, how we handle getting around in the winter, and how much salt we use, just kind of thinking through things of, we live our daily lives, but what are the small things that everybody can do to best be able to continue living in a way that we enjoy living, but yet still have the quality of the water resources that we're looking for? So some of the things that we have been working on, and will be continuing to work on over this next year, and I'm always looking for ideas and ways to be able to plug into Bayport, so do let me know. And all of these pictures come from being up in Inspiration, which is awesome. So planting for pollinators. A lot of people are really concerned about the flights of the bees and the butterflies and the birds. What's great about native plants is that they're also great for cleaner water as well. So if we are able to plant more native plants, they have these really deep roots, which means they need less water, less fertilizer. They infiltrate water better, which means that you don't have to worry as much about stormwater runoff. And a lot of people really are getting on board with this. So we always are trying to find a way to meet people where they're at, and being able to ask them to do things that just make them feel good. Also about promoting best landscape management practices. Up in Inspiration, we've done a few prescribed burns over the past few years. I love it. It's huge plume of smoke, and everybody's like, oh no, this is awful. And you're like, no, actually, it's kind of awesome. We're doing it in a very safe and viable way. We're seeing this practice being used more and more across Minnesota, because it does actually help manage fire risk as well. But being able to talk to people about the fact that these landscapes used to burn all the time, and it's actually we who have stopped that from happening. But it rejuvenates the soil, rejuvenates the vegetation, rejuvenates the wildlife that have evolved to be here, is a very powerful story. Promoting more natural shorelines. In Minnesota, we love our waters. We love living as close to them as possible, but at the same time, we eradicate the natural shorelines. We get rid of the trees and the shrubs. We have our gravel, we have our sand beaches. We use riprap when we're concerned about erosion, and we're really trying to help people find more of a balance, right? You're able to have your dock. You're able to have your little bit of beach shoreline, but consider having a buffer too, because that's going to be able to support the lake health. It's going to be able to minimize green algae, and it's going to make sure that you still have frogs and turtles for your kids to catch, or grandkids to catch.
So Barbara, I know you like to talk with your hands, but I want to make sure people can hear you when they're listening online.
Can you hear me? I'm so used to talking loud that I'm not used to people not hearing me.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay. One of the other things that we've been working on, especially over this past year, and looking into this year, is really working with local leaders such as yourselves. So there are a lot of policies and practices that are at your disposal that really are about being able to see how you want your community to develop, being able to look at the future of what your community is going to be. We've developed a few cool video series of talking about, given the fact that in the East Metro, we're continuing to see this population surge, and part of that, right? We moved here from South Minneapolis. But being able just to do it in a very mindful way. And we're actually, the partnership is putting out a request for proposals over the next couple of weeks, and we're actually going to be hiring an outside group to help us build materials and do outreach with communities. We're really focusing on the Chisago County communities. In many ways, Washington County communities have such a leg up in thinking about this, just given the fact that we've had to develop so quickly, and they're just really starting to see the push of this development up north. But even, again, I go back to Inspiration. The reason why we moved into Inspiration is because it is an example of a conservation development. It's a cluster development. All of these houses are on quarter acre lots. You could have made it so they were three-quarters of an acre or larger, you would have had less houses, but by taking that away and doing quarter acre lots, we have 150 acres of prairie around us. And that's the main reason why we moved to the neighborhood, because I was like, my HOA dues pay for the management of prairie? I'm in. That was my selling point. So being able to, we've been hosting a lot of workshops in the past, traveling on the river. I know several of you have actually come to those in the past. We definitely are going to be continuing those, but we're going to be doing some really focused, pointed outreach in the next couple of years, working with communities and helping them to think about how to manage stormwater, thinking about minimal impact design standards, which Bayport has already adopted. But being able to think through, how can we help these communities develop in a way that they feel retains that uniqueness and quality of the community in which they're leading. Doing a lot of storm drain. Matt gets on me this a lot when we're talking about how people get so disconnected about what just goes down your storm drain, thinking that it goes to a treatment, a water treatment system, and it doesn't. It goes directly to our lakes, rivers, and streams. And so being able to encourage people to kind of look out for their storm drains. There's the Adopt a Storm Drain program. I've taken both of my girls' Girl Scouts troops through it. Matt gets probably tired of requesting me, being like, Matt, we need to clean storm drains. Which ones do we need cleaned? But then also talking about chlorine as well. So that picture on the screen that you see of that salt, that's actually the Anderson Elementary driveway out front. And this was October 2003, 2023, and I was just going to pick up my girls' from school, and I saw that amount of salt. Chloride is an emerging pollutant in our communities. We're starting to see a lot of our lakes, rivers, and streams become impaired for chloride. It is considered a permanent pollutant, and so there's no economically feasible way to get that salt out once it's in. And it's a concern not only for surface water, but our groundwater as well. So we've become a little loose in our salt diet when it comes to putting it on the ground. And so just trying to help people understand that that's not something that we want, but getting into our lakes, rivers, and streams. I know that Simon and the Public Works folks here at Bayport are all smart salt certified, which is awesome, but it's getting to the private lands. And so this was actually a vendor for the Stillwater School District. And so we actually contacted them and asked them if they were smart salt certified, and they were not. So hopefully they went through that program. But in the meantime, now the janitorial and custodial staff at Anderson know that, you know, once they see just it sitting on the ground, and the ground is dry, to go out and sweep it up, so it doesn't get into the storm drains. So just cool little, just little local impacts that we likely save the St. Croix River from a bunch of chloride pollution, just by sweeping that up. So the end result of all of this, the end goal, is that we just want to continue to work with our communities. We want to continue to work with private landowners, but also the community leaders, and that includes obviously all of you. And so we have, we are essentially, we are here and we're willing to come talk at any time. If there's a particular topic that you're interested in hearing about, as it pertains to natural resources, feel free to talk to me, talk to Angie, and we're more than willing to come and kind of discuss whatever you'd like to do. We want to be able to promote the Adopt a Jane program, when development comes to town, tools that we have for growing communities. But again, if you're interested in what's going on with Pear Creek, what's going on with the St. Croix, what's going on, you know, upstream that we should be knowing about, we're always happy to come in and provide you just a snapshot of education and things that we can do. So, there's my other daughter. Thanks.
Hi, Audrey. Thank you, Barbara.
I stand for questions.
There's no sitting here. Everyone's standing for questions. Okay, so you mentioned that you're funded by a couple different things, but how do they get funds? Is it taxpayer money that, are we?
So the Lower St. Croix Watership Partnership, what funds me and my education program and our ag outreach specialist is funds from the Board of Soil and Water Resources. And so Bowser, the lovely acronym, but it comes from the Clean Water Fund, the state Clean Water.
The state Clean, oh, kind of like how we got grant money for buying the land, buy the, oh, okay.
And then the MREP program is a locally funded program. And one of the reasons why my position got funded by the state is because of the success of the East Metro Water Resource Education Program. And so that program has a lot of overlap with a lot of the partners that are in the partnership, but it also includes municipalities as well, like Bayport, because we offer specific outreach assistance when it comes to talking about your MS4 permit. And so it's a state requirement to be able to speak to, why do we have stormwater? How do we manage stormwater? And being able to kind of provide that additional leg of education. But MREP has been ongoing since 2006, which is unheard of for a lot of programs, just because most of the time when you have a grant, the grant runs out.
Yeah.
What happens to the program?
You guys do, you do a great job. I just want to say that. I've been on those boat, two of, I think of the boat things, maybe three. I know John's gone on it where you take three officials out there and we learn a lot more about what we should be doing and what our residents should be doing, et cetera. And yeah, those are great. And I know you also came to our night, to unite, I believe, and you had a really cool display with the long.
Our root pull display.
Yeah.
So just to kind of give people an idea of how long those native plant roots really are. So your, your common milkweed plant, the roots can extend anywhere from five to eight feet into the ground.
Yeah. I just love that you guys are present and you're out there and you're trying to help people and.
And if there are other community events that you would like us to be at, just let us know.
All right.
You know, you know my number.
We know how to reach you. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, very informative and I'm glad you guys are there doing what you're doing. And I hope the funding doesn't ever run out.
Me too.
All right, thank you. All right. Did anyone else have, I just sort of talked and then if anyone else had any questions for us, you just left.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Right here.
You're done. Okay, good. All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. We're going to consider resolution adopting items one through eight. The January 6th, 2025 City Council Workshop and Regular Meeting Minutes, the January Payables and Receipts, January Building Plumbing Mechanical and Zoning Permits Report, Special Event Application from Kidney-Croix Girl Scouts for Twilight Camp at Lakeside Park, Special Event Application from Manger and Olio for the Burr Crawl on February 22nd, Special Event Application from Anderson Corporation for a Picnic at Lakeside Park, and Application for Tobacco License from Bayport Liquor. And that's it. Do you have a motion to approve? Oh, yeah, motion.
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, John.
One second.
Thank you, Ethan. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Gilmar.
Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. All right, passes, thank you. There's no public hearings. We do have some unfinished business with the labor agreements. This one is for the Police Chief and Sergeant, and Matt is going to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a final contract for, of the three unions within the city. It's specifically for the Police Chief and the Sergeant, so just two members of this union. We've been in negotiations since last fall sometime and have come to an agreement to be approved tonight by the City Council. As we've discussed in the past about any police associated wage, we've seen a drastic increase in that, not only in police officers, but also in sergeant and chief roles. And this contract is no different from the contract that was approved earlier, well, last year for the police officers. I'm not going to key in on any, there was no real drastic changes to the amendments really, except for the wage portion. And I wanted to give a, just a description on how we work through the sergeant and chief role. So the sergeant in both these roles, rather than giving them a specific increase, we use the step schedule for the increase. So the sergeant role, he is currently in a grade nine position and the proposal is to move that up to a grade 10 position. I added that he was at step eight, but he's actually at step six. And he will remain in that position, that step moving into this year. So if you look at your sheet, I passed out the step schedule. So grade nine has the sergeant at the very bottom and then he will move up to their, that person will move up to the grade 10 level, but not change steps for this year.
But he's currently at the six level?
Step six. Yeah, so across the top is step.
Oh, step six. Oh.
Not grade, yeah.
Ah, gee, that's where I got confused.
Grade goes along the left side and then steps goes across the top.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, and so he would move to 10. Okay.
Okay. So that is a 10.7% increase over what his 2024 wage. That also includes a normal cost of living raise that we give out on any time of year. The sergeant role, based on a fair amount of analysis from the East Metro comparables, even at that wage increase, we are seeing that this, that his role is still likely underfunded or he's lower wages than what we tried to reach when we did the police officers. If you recall, the police officers reached about an average 50% or average scale for East Metro. The sergeant role is still under that average.
You mean median, like 50 percentile?
Median, average, they're actually both the same.
Okay.
They were both very close to the same when we did the analysis. So for that position, we, sometimes what happens in a union contract, we allow it to reopen for like a wage or for anything specific. In this one, we did allow a 2026 and 2027 reopening because we had indicated that we'd be doing non-union staff, looking at their wages also for comparison. So at the same time, and it gives us a wider range of, when we're looking at the League of Minnesota City Study, we'll be able to see a wider range and get maybe better comparables for that sergeant position. So then moving on to the chief position, which based on East Metro comparables was actually also very low for this side of the state, this side of the metro. So currently the chief is a grade 11. You can see him listed there and that position is at a step eight currently, so he can't, they can't go any higher. In 2025, we're proposing a move to step 12 and then a 2026, step 13. And I do have, I won't get them out and show you, but if anybody wants, I do have the comparables.
You mean grade, right?
Yes. Sorry, did I say step?
Confusing, so.
I'm sorry. So in 2025, he'd move up to grade 12, step eight.
Okay, stay in step eight.
He can't go any higher than step eight, at least on our current scale. And then 2026, grade 13. At that point, he would not move up any further because he bumps up against the city administrator's grade level.
Yeah, we can't give you a raise.
Yeah. So there are other cities who have more grades than what we do. That's not a question for tonight on how we would handle that if we're interested in revamping that schedule, so.
Okay, definitely helped to have the step schedule. Thank you for bringing that.
Yes.
It was really confusing trying to follow it when it was just text and there was no reference.
So again, if anyone is interested in looking at the comparables for the East Metro, I have them all here. I can pass them out after the meeting or we'll make them part of the record too, so.
So the final takeaway is, when we talked about how police positions were at about the median, which was also the average, did you say that these two are also following in that range now or are they even below that?
No, ma'am. Unfortunately, if, if we're only, and these are a little different, then I would consider the East Metro Police Officers because of the size of the.
Yeah, you could only choose a couple of different cities that are the same size as us, which is.
Correct. That's why I think the League of Minnesota Cities might be a better case study for like the chief and sergeant. Now, sergeant role, it could be argued that you're probably leading a group roughly the same size as the other East Metro communities, but, so we'll take a look at that and do a larger comparison for both of these, so.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Just, you know, when I read through this, I, you know, focus on the changes which are in red. What is the Me Too Clause?
So what that means is.
It's referenced in 26 something and I think it's 18 something, 26.5, 26.5.
Yeah, so the, let's just take the 18, it's number three on my memo, 18.3. A Me Too Clause was added to the contract to mimic the Post Employment Healthcare Savings Plan through MSRS. So essentially what they do is they see what the Police Officers Union received and a Me Too just copies what they received.
Gotcha.
That way you don't have to write it all out again in this one.
Perfect. That answers my question.
Good question, John. All right, anyone else want to make a motion instead?
I move to approve the labor agreement with the Minnesota Public Employees Association for January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2024, for the Police Chief and Sergeant.
You meant 2027?
Yep, 2027.
Okay. Do we have a second?
One second.
All right. Thanks Katie and John and all those in favor? Really? We're spending money somehow and we don't have to have a roll call, huh? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Now we are moving on to, who is it, Simon, going to talk about some street lighting.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you are hopefully all aware, we had a street light fall on Fifth Avenue and that's where it sparked the conversation for street lighting along Fifth Avenue, replacement of those. They are mismatched. They're two different varieties up there. I don't know if any of you have been able to drive through town during the nighttime, but it is not very well lit. The lights are yellow. It could use a facelift. Discussion had led all the way to complete replacement, adding new ones, reboring, adding conduit. Fortunately, we do have a upgraded cabinet in the area that we are able to use. Our engineering firm, SEH, and their lighting specialist, Ken Talon, has been instrumental in putting something together for us that fits our budget. And we did, I believe it was the mayor who actually led us, or turned, got us onto Stillwater, replacing the lights up there. They have a big project going through town. They are getting, they are willing to give some of their poles to the city of Bayport. Ken and I went up there and looked at them. It was his opinion that they're in good shape. Their fiberglass, they should last 10, 20 years. There's a little bit of work that needs to be done, painting, fiberglass work, Bondo, things like that, but they should shape up nicely. So the poles were a significant expense and the savings are enough to get it so that if we were to get luminaires, which would be something that we would have to purchase as well as installation done by a contractor, total estimated cost is down to around $21,100. Drastically different compared to what we were looking at in the neighborhood of, I want to say $125,000, $150,000 when we started this conversation. So it's all very reasonable. We can take delivery of the poles when Stillwater is taking theirs down. That would allow us to take delivery and fix the poles as well as order luminaires through Ken Talon and then coordinate the contractor to come in and install them. There's really no time constraints. There's really no schedule. We could do it pretty much anytime we wanted to this summer. I think the light poles, fixing those would be good, good side work for a little bit and then we can start figuring out putting them up. So that's more than, more than you need to know at this point in time, but this is, this is where we stand. And ultimately, my recommendation is that City Council authorizes the staff to proceed with this proposal, asking, using the poles from Stillwater as outlined.
Thanks, Simon.
New luminaires.
Thank you. I appreciate you reaching out to Stillwater upon my, what Matt thought was a crazy idea, I think. But why not reuse those poles? I mean, because they're not in bad shape, right? They're not going to go in a landfill now. We can use them. Unfortunately, ours are probably going to end up in a landfill, but at least two sets aren't, right?
Well, they're metal. They'll probably.
Are they going to do?
Scrapyard, actually.
Okay, scrapyard, good. That's what I was wondering, if there's things we can recycle, that would be wonderful. We had some discussions about the style of what they're going to look like when we were talking about redoing everything, conduit and everything. Do we have the, because you're going to get new tops when you say luminaires, is that what that means?
Yes.
Like the top part is going to look different than the picture that's in the packet?
It's.
Or is it just the light part?
That's, that's kind of up to us. I think that would be something, once we're ready to purchase those, that I think we would be smart to bring back to council for.
Okay, that's why I guess I'm wondering, are the, what is a luminaire in a light post?
The light.
It's a light, the fixture.
Yeah, so it's the, the top part.
Yep.
It's not just the light that's inside, but it's the whole look of the top. Okay.
Yep, the housing and everything.
So we can look at what we want for the top of it at some point?
Yes.
We don't have to figure that out now in order to move forward with this?
No, but prices are outlined on my memo, so.
Okay, great. And then we had talked about possibly doing fewer light posts than what we have had in the past on Fifth Avenue because we didn't know if we needed that many, if we could get lights that were nowadays more downward facing and spreading the light further. So are we going to for sure have to put seven lights? I'd like to get as many as possible, just so we have replacement posts too, if we ever need them, but just kind of wanted to know how many lights we're actually, SEH has recommending that we put in for sure. Is it seven or did we end up being able, or was it going to be eight originally?
It is, I believe it is seven.
It says seven in the memo, but yeah.
So it's seven. It would be simply replacing.
Okay, so we didn't talk about doing fewer, we were just going to redo the.
Right.
Okay. Which I guess makes sense, otherwise you're going to have a hole, kind of?
Well, Ken Talon with SEH, it is Talon, right, John? Okay. With SEH said that, you know, he was actually kind of pushing for an additional to stagger them.
Oh.
Removal of one with the addition of another one on the other side, just to have the lights offset so that you'd have even coverage. Good time to do it, probably going to wait though at this point because that would require pouring concrete or conduit.
Okay. So we'll just literally just take the ones out, replace them with this, and there's seven of them.
Yep.
Okay. Makes, I mean, we were thinking of that not only just to save money, but also just for light pollution reasons that we thought we could reduce it, but makes sense to.
I think we should look at something that I had brought up in our workshop. I had gone through, I go through that area very often in my daily travels and recently at night, you know, it was a Friday evening and the people moving from the restaurants and stuff, it's, it was dark through there and I think we should maximize and in the interest of light pollution, maybe not something as aesthetically pleasing to look at, but let's get the light beamed down and, you know, really focus it. I think that's going to be our best option, but I think this is a great, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 savings here for us and we can work through those details. But I don't think less light is a, we can always, if we wanted to, we could disconnect one and not have it on if we wanted to, but.
We also talked about wrapping the posts with lights so that there's some extra light and it looks kind of pretty, kind of like Olio has around the tree, you know, something like that, kind of enhance it. So we will have further discussions about all of that probably, but right now you just want us, want to know if we're okay with you getting these used poles and moving forward with that plan, right?
That's right.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, great. Maybe, go for it.
I will move to proceed with the replacement of the streetlights on Fifth Avenue North as we've discussed tonight.
One second.
Thanks, John and Ethan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Doesn't sound like anyone's opposed. All right, new business. Thank you, Simon. That'll be great. Consider resolution for a conditional use permit to conduct auto sales with outdoor storage and display at 397 Fifth Avenue North, which is called Lenny's Garage, just to get her attention. Lenny's here with us. So Sarah's going to present this item.
Here, sit if I could get the projector on, please. So in the interest of time, we're going to go through this pretty quickly, but this shouldn't be new to any of the members of the council. We've held a couple of meetings and workshops on this. So the subject property is zone B2 central business and is surrounded by a mixture of commercial and residential land uses. Auto repair is a permitted use in the B2 zip district, but auto sales and display require a special use permit. In twenty twenty three, the city council issued an interim use permit, which provided an opportunity for the city to evaluate whether the use may be appropriate for the site long term. Due to the success of the interim use permit over the past year, the property owner is requesting the city consider a permanent conditional use permit for the site with conditions and operations consistent with the interim permit. Primarily, the use will consist of auto sales and display with a focus on online advertising and sales by appointment. Hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, eight AM to nine PM, with exterior building lights to be deactivated by ten PM, and sixteen stalls will be delineated for outdoor sales and display. As requested by the city council at their workshop in December, the property owner has agreed to replace the gravel area along the west property line in front of the building with concrete or sod to comply with city ordinance, reduce sediment runoff, and enhance the appearance of the site. During the interim period, the property owner did complete some significant improvements, which are summarized here and have enhanced the overall appearance of the site. Although clearly deficient in meeting many of the dimensional standards of the current zoning ordinance for auto sales, staff has outlined some of the items that the city council may want to consider, including as conditions of approval, such as replacing additional gravel with hard surface or landscaping, and implementing some onsite stormwater treatment, like a vegetated soil or rain garden. This site outlines the findings of fact, of which staff is basing a recommendation of approval for the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on January fourteenth, and no comments were heard. The planning commission also is recommending approval of the C O P. At this time, I'd be happy to take any questions, and the property owners are also in the audience and available for questions.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions?
One thing on the the resurfacing we did, and I don't know if it indicated here, but we were going to give them, you know, some time on that. Like, it wasn't like you have to do it in, I think it was.
Councilmember Gilmore, yes, the staff's original report indicated October first of twenty twenty five, and the planning commission would like to extend that to twenty twenty six, so that's been updated in the report.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it says no later than October first, twenty twenty six.
Oh, I was looking at this part.
Oh.
Just kind of the table.
Yeah, it's under C.
Got it. I just want to make sure that was in there.
Yeah. And it sounds like the owner finds that to be a reasonable timeframe and is on board with making that update, wanted to do it anyways, kind of, so I think it'll look a lot better, which is great, and the site itself already looks better than it did, so. So I'm glad that there's a business running out of there, and it's, it's nice to have. Barbara was just here telling us how important it is that we are making sure that runoff is, is reduced and all of that, so. That's why we have to do these things, right? Okay, anyone have any other questions or comments? Nope? Motion is in order, then.
All right. I'll move to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit to conduct auto sales with outdoor storage and display at three nine seven Fifth Avenue North, subject to findings of fact and conditions of approval.
Second.
Thank you, Ethan and John. Now we need a roll call.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Aye.
Councilmember Dahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Mayor Hanson.
Aye. Motion passes. There you go, congrats.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
All right, hope all goes well. Um, you're you can leave if you'd like. I'm sure you're like, okay, got that. Okay, thanks. So we're going to move on to, we have a few minutes, we can quick do city council liaison reports. Carl sent me one, so I was going to. Here it is. He, of course, apologized that he can't be here, but he did have some commitments before being elected, so. But he had a chance to attend the Washington County Sheriff's Training for Elected Officials on Disaster and Emergency Response, which is great. I went to it as well, if any, I don't know if there's still dates out there for that, but if anybody else wants to go, it is very informative, and I think it's worth your while. He found it valuable, and he would encourage you to attend as well. And you get to meet some other elected officials. In February, he's also going to go to the foundational program for the League of Minnesota Cities Elected Leaders Institute. It's a two-day workshop in Plymouth, I believe. And he is going to his first meeting for Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission soon, I can't remember where that is. But yeah, and he had a chance to also meet with Matt and Sarah to talk through the proposal from, from Pratt Homes about everything, and we have some of his feedback on that a moment later. So that was his update. Did the cable commission?
Yeah, we did meet, well, I actually sat in on the planning commission as well.
Look at you.
And it was for this very, the Lenny's Garage thing, so that was basically it. It was, it was short but sweet, but. Yes, cable commission met. We've got a few new commissioners with Stillwater moved some people around, so we have the new woman that was elected joining us, and then one other citizen that joined us as well. They did some updating of the bylaws. And then we did, I know you guys probably don't really know too much about it, but this huddle thing that they were worried that we weren't going to be able to get funding or get advertisement because they're putting these cameras in.
Oh, for the sporting events?
For the sporting events, but that's not true. We can still, as long as the coaches and everybody, you know, still get funding for it, that the huddle cameras are there, but we can still do it.
Oh, that's great news. That's really good news.
And I think both of the ladies that were, that joined us have some, like, I don't know, it seemed like they were very excited with them because they have some background and some things that maybe the two that are working there are super proficient in, so it's kind of, it was good, it was good meeting.
Awesome. So Valley Access can still televise sporting events and get advertising from local businesses. Yeah, that's great.
Meeting before, it was like.
Big scare, yeah.
Yeah, so it was good to, good to figure that out.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you. John, watershed?
Middle Sinclair Watershed did not meet, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Katie, B Cal.
Yep, I went to B Cal, a couple things, I'll go fast. The First State Bank is wanting to do, host a T-shirt contest for Derby Days, so they're didn't have much info on it, but they do know they want it before.
What does that mean? I mean, it sounds horrible, you mean like a design of a shirt?
Like a design of a shirt, and then it will be sold at Derby Days. The shirt will, so you're gonna make a shirt and.
So they'll, they want people to design?
Yeah, they don't know who is going to judge yet if it's going to be local people or people at the church, or people at the bank that will be judging who's going to win, but, and then it will be done months before Derby Days.
And who gets the money from selling the shirts?
B Cal will then take over the rights of the shirt.
Oh.
Get it printed and sell them, from what they're thinking, but all of it still has in like the beginning stages.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea to have shirts. I mean, we have those talk Derby to me ones, but yeah, that would be great.
There also is a grant that they're going to apply for that, I guess it's already closed down, so hopefully they applied for it. The next thing is the Easter egg hunt, looking for a couple volunteers. The Boy Scouts will probably still volunteer. And then that Burr Crawl is the new thing that maybe they'll take over next year to do as one of their events.
Oh, awesome.
Get a nice bar again, kind of like do the same thing, like our Bar Crawl, but during the winter.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I know it kind of came up at the last minute, and.
Yeah.
So the businesses are kind of handling it themselves, but yeah.
The next meeting is Thursday, February twentieth, at six o'clock at the Legion.
Wonderful, and again, members are encouraged to.
Yeah, you don't have to be a member to.
And you can also volunteer, yeah.
Go volunteer, whatever.
Exactly. All right, I didn't have too busy of the month because I was gone in Florida for a couple weeks, but Simon and I had, are still working on the grant from the St. Paul Area Association of Railtors. I think that's what SPAR stands for. So it's kind of fun, we have another call scheduled, but we did speak to her, I think, on the seventh or something, but we got the grant, we just got to figure out exactly how it's all going to get used. The, let's see, oh, I went, Matt was also on this call, Minnesota Department of Health had an update on expansion of the special well and boring construction area. Didn't really affect Bayport, it was more, West Lakeland and Lake Elmo had a little bit of an expansion, but it was helpful for me to understand what that even does, and it's just like, it helps. Matt can probably explain it better, but it's about how, where you can drill wells if you have a new home, and it doesn't really affect us that much, so. But still, let's see, I did leadership in the valley again, every month I do that, and this was the health and wellness month, so it was kind of fun because Cam from our fire department was there, and he did a demonstration with some other Lakeview EMS people where they reenacted the incident that happened at the marina where the guy had the heart attack, and they came on the call so they could show us sort of the process of how it all happens and how they revived him, and they had a, you know, recessive ante kind of person there, and figure, yeah, so it was, it was kind of cool. That was just one of many things we did that day. Regional Council of Mayors and the Fire Relief Association were both on the thirteenth. Nothing really big to report for fire relief. The funds are performing very well, like above the, the standard, which is good, because we need that money to pay everybody out eventually. I did, I mentioned this at our workshop, I met with Dwight Covens, the owner of the business, the building that is now half empty on Fifth Avenue. He was the, he's an attorney, he moved us to water, but chatted with him a little bit about the lighting on Fifth Avenue, how Lenny's Garage has been for them, because that's right next door, and everything is great, even though he's moved. And again, I talked about the foundation with him, because he's someone who started the, I believe it was the Stillwater Foundation, so I'm still pursuing all that. I think I'm mostly, I'm leaning towards emphasizing the Bayport aspect of the Stillwater Foundation, but I have a couple more people to talk to. On the sixteenth, we hosted Team Malta from the World Snow Sculpting Celebration, took them on a quick tour of Bayport, and I was just so pleased with how the city came together to host them, so thank you, Simon and public work staff for putting up the flags, and the bank for just coordinating everything. The PD came and went on the tour with us, and fire department drove us around in a fire truck, and it was, it was just really a fun, fun time. I wish it was longer, but we, it was pretty quick. They ended up having, getting an emergency call, they had to get back and fix something with the sculpture or whatever, so we stopped at Mabel's and had a Malta malt and everything. It was, it was really fun. So thank you all for helping with that, and let's see. Connie's Farewell was really nice. Again, thanks staff for that, and I, I was pleased at how many people came, it was a really nice event. And then I also had a chance to meet the new executive director of Community Thread. His name is Derek Jager. And hopefully, he stops in sometime and introduces himself here. I know we've had visits from Sally Anderson in the past, but she's retired now, so. And then I just wanted to invite everybody to the Burr Crawl on February twenty second. So it's going to be, that's our first winter Bar Crawl in Bayport, and the summer one is always a lot of fun, so hopefully people sign up for that. It's on Facebook, there's an event, and I think you can also just, if you want to go to Olio's website, you could sign up for it through there. You got to scroll down on the page a little bit, and you'll find it, but it's on their reservation page, so. It's twenty dollars, I think. And there's going to be giveaways, and there's deals on food and drink, and fun time. So that's it, and we should probably just, does anyone have any questions for staff on their reports? Otherwise, I think we'll just kind of, it's seven o'clock, and we have another meeting.
I'll move to adjourn, then.
All right, thank you, John.
Perfect.
Thanks, Katie. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.